This conference will now be recorded.
We have known requested time before the board this evening, so we'll go right into section two of the agenda. And the first item we have is a for a contract between the village electric department and the village. They were the engineers who aired the engineered drawings for the cool building down at substation one behind the firehouse. The change order represents modifications that were made to the building. It did not come through our attention sooner, otherwise we would have had them ahead of time. So in fact, as you all know, the building is finished. And this represents the change orders that were involved with the process that went over in part the original contract resurface. Any comments from anybody on that? We all understand what it's about. In any case, then I would ask for a motion to approve the change order and hence for approving the. Amen. So. There's no further comments or conversation on this matter. All those in favor, please signify aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Next item we have is a service contract this time for the fire department. And this has to do with servicing the colder generator that takes over down there when the electricity goes out. Should never go out anymore with what's covered behind it. But this is a standing service agreement that we we see once a year. If any questions are noted, happy to try to get responses. And this does involve two, two separate business, one in August, which the major service is $775 is proposed. And then a little, but pretty minor service $425 and that's generally done in February of each year. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you for that. Next item we have is, you may recall at our last board meeting, we authorized and created a position of technical coordinator. And I mentioned at the time that my intention was to create a lateral transfer here. The individual that I would like to appoint this evening or will appoint is, is already in the employee of the, she's been employed in the electric department as a part-time person. He's been working diligently on GIS mapping projects. And Mindy, I believe he's had some other activity down there as well.
Yeah, he's been working hard. Converting from BioPro to the USA software for General Properties. And he actually created a program and wrote a whole code so that we could import the information that we received from the company that we hired to do the inventory, which is going to save us about nine months.
I think you've all been, well, Dr. Lemon, I hope Peter has, the part 11. I think when you do need him, you're going to be, he's he's a very capable young man and we can put his talents to greater use. The times come when we should put on masks and glasses. It's lucky I can see anything. We can put his, his talent to work with the other GIS mapping that this village has been sore needed for a number of years. And although we have a lot of, we accumulated the data over the years, we've never had the personnel on the payroll to get that work done. Well, he's a, he's a Clarkson graduate. He's an electrical engineer. His intent is to be around the area for approximately two more years. He came to us following an internship with the electric department. And we put him on, we put him on as a part-time employee down there to help them with their GIS mapping and the logging that I mentioned. Demonstrated a very, a very high level of capability in these fields. And at this point, he's interested in, in working a little bit more than part-time. So what I'm proposing tonight and will go is the point that Patrick Wells position of technical coordinator for the village. Mayor. His responsibility to work on GIS mapping, not only of the electric utilities, but sewer lines, water lines. He'll complete the current software conversion that's going on in the electric department from USA software to, I'm sorry, to USA software from BioPro. Correct? And in addition to that, something that we heard about in the report last meeting, he has capabilities in terms of assisting the village with the creation of the website, which, which I believe is long overdue for the village, but then I'm reminded that only 10 years ago, 11 years ago, we didn't have a website. So we're taking advantage of the skills that he has. Currently, he's employed at the rate of $25 an hour. And I'm appointing Patrick Wells. This would be a lateral transfer at the same hourly rate at the moment. He will be picking up some benefits he doesn't generally get. And he can fill a position and become really the first technical coordinator of this position. I can have a motion ratifying that. So moved?
Second.
Here. Any further discussion or comments? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, well. Anita, I guess either you or I will get the opportunity to let Patrick know that he's probably going to be stationed up here, I believe, instead of down in the electric plant. So we'll look forward to seeing him, Glenn, tomorrow.
We got him in his office up here, but yeah. And Tracy's office. That way all the department heads can access him.
So that might be, I'm expecting that, you know, this, this actually fulfills begins to fulfill the advice and commentary from the board, we'll look at a little bit later here on government communication and where we, where people view us on that. Okay, the next item we have on the agenda, item B. Embarrasses me. Jared Hathaway, as of June 3rd, Jared's employed in the electric department. As of June 3rd, he will have completed his six-month probationary period. And in the time that, in the six months he's been employed in the department, he has demonstrated a wide range of skills. He's, he's obviously you might expect that he, from the Hathaway family, he's very skilled in equipment operation. And we can look forward to a probably a long-term employee here, but in any event, effective June 3rd, he will have completed his probationary period. And I'd like to record to recognize that Jared Hathaway has become a permanent employee since that day. We have emotions for that.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions?
Anita made a motion, made a motion. Has a request that you ask everyone to identify themselves. It's on the video.
Okay. I'm not sure how to do that because they don't know which color numbers they are. Like I can't, I mean, they're not seeing this, so I can't just say color number five, identify yourself.
I think it's probably supposed to.
I mean, I think if they speak, we'll ask them to identify themselves.
At this, at this point.
Anita, can't you ask all callers to identify themselves?
They don't speak at the same time then. Like there's no easy, smooth way to do that. We'll ask anyone who speaks to identify themselves.
Do, do the callers know what the number is when we?
I don't know.
Okay, so we have a little bit of a dilemma with the technology as good as it is. We're still on an learning curve. Where's Patrick when you need him?
Well, he's really good at this.
Okay, in the absence of being able to recognize everyone that has called in or has dialed in tonight, I suggest that we move on. The next item E on the agenda is again, another advancement. This comes from the request of Tim Davi as electric superintendent. As of June 19th, 2020, the department member Justin Jordan will meet all of the requirements for the advanced to a second-class lineman, step four. He has successfully completed his second year of lineman school. He possesses the required Class B CBL driver's license. On the June 19th, he will have done an employ as a third-class lineman for 30 months. The recommendation bears the approval of Tim Davi as superintendent. So with that said, he's recommending that back in June 19th. What does he say, Brian? This is Justin Jordan.
It's a blanket.
Processing again.
Yes, and Brian will be the next one to know one.
Recommend Justin Jordan being promoted to second-class lineman, step four, at a pay rate of $34.48 per hour. Signed by Tim Davi.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion on that? If not, let us call a motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? The periodically we, we hire people on a probationary basis. And such was the case for Jason Beating, he's hired over a year ago.
I think about three years.
In any event, Jason has finally had the opportunity of the customer's given his past civil service and his job positions, parking enforcement officer. I might add, he passed the final exams for 100, which I think is exceptional. And therefore, he moves from his position as a probationary employee to a permanent employee, effective with that having been completed. So the date of disqualification will be June 4th, 2020. The motion in support of that? Any, any further discussion on that? The motion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. The next item we have involve. It's the Lake Classic 2020 Reimagined Main Street request. And in the interest of documenting file a little bit further, I did do, and I believe each of you received a copy electronically from the today, which describes the Main Street Reimagined Proposal as it was received by this board initially on May 20th. And just for the benefit of all of those folks who are calling in, because I recognize some of the names and I know this is a point of interest. During the village board meeting Monday, May 20th, representation or date presentation was received presented by Mr. Greg Porzalary, proposing Main Street close its westbound traffic lane and utilize that lane and curbside parking lane to provide for outside dining and retail sale facility. This would extend approximately from municipal parking lot entrance across the post office to a Serenacavano intersection with Main Street. Effective dates to be July 1st to August 31st, or Labor Day, depending on the board's choice. This proposal was in recognition of the impacts from COVID-19 as shops and restaurants reopen for business. As we now know, COVID-19 restrictions require each restaurant to reduce its capacity by 50%. And remaining tables must be spaced six feet apart on the, in the interior, on the exterior. Or have installed between the tables a minimum five-foot physical barrier between such tables. Bar seating is likewise restricted. All patrons must wear face masks until seated, while all staff are required to wear face masks at all times. Retail shops on the street may require customers, may require customers to wear a mask to enter the shop. It's highly recommended that everyone wear a mask. Employees are required to wear masks to maintain six-foot distance between each. A proprietor, this has been authorized by the governor by executive order, to refuse entrance or to provide service to a customer not wearing a mask. That is at the proprietor's choice. Limitations on the number of patrons or customers permitted in the restroom or shop, combined with a 50% reduction in seating capacity or six-foot distancing, may substantially limit the affected businesses. Further, it is felt that individuals and families may have some reluctance about entering an enclosed restroom or shop to avoid exposing themselves to potential virus. Thus, this proposal has been put forth to create an alternative that addresses in part the lost capacity of the business and to address those customers reluctant to enter an enclosed space. Surveys undertaken by the proponents of the business community indicate 70% outcome in favor of the proposal. A further proposal taken by Roost of 12946 residents also indicated, I might add, this is from their mailing list, so it's not the entirety of the community, also indicated 70-plus percent favor outcome of the proposal. That was done a little over a week ago and represented, I think, an initial extension of some. Let's see here if I have some 600 community names that were available to Roost. We do know that it also went out on Roost's Facebook page, but we have no way of measuring what additional input might have come from that. The village, starting from March, May 20th, did approach the New York State Department of Transportation and has received the required permit applications which would close the traffic lane temporarily for the use of the space outlined above. The application requires the submission of a traffic diversion plan. In this instance, it would be similar to what will happen for the Main Street reconstruction plan when that project gets underway. And also a placement of appropriate language at each highway where traffic would be experiencing diversion. And just for the sake of clarity, the diversions coming in on Route 86 from the west, which would be the southbound lane we're diverting, would be starting from Old Military Road, would be a commercial diversion for commercial traffic that is not necessary to be on Main Street. We see that even now and we're currently talking to DOT about maybe eventually that becomes a, a permanent thing because sometimes tractor-trailers get on the Main Street that are too wide for the lane of traffic, especially in the area of the Alice Theater. Preliminary plan has been provided by Creighton Manning, who is also responsible for developing the diversion plan for the Main Street construction project. The estimated cost, if that's completed, would be $5,000 for Creighton Manning. Signage development and placement would be done by Domoli Corporation at an estimated cost of this, when I wrote it, was 20 to 25, became 30 to 35 since I wrote this. Some additional costs will be involved should a temporary stoplight be placed at West Valley Road, which in previous diversions on Main Street we have used, that could amount to as much as $7,500 depending.
Per light.
Per, per light, per month. And also additional equipment necessary to place the barriers and boulders, which would be done by our own employees, but I don't have a backhoe with a claw and it's capable of picking up that weight, so that would be a temporary rental. Other, other work would be provided by Lake Classic Beautification, which would provide planters and flowers. The goal of this is to make it as attractive a, a plan as possible. Additional work to be provided by Village DPW crews and equipment would involve placement of barriers and boulders to form protective surrounds for approximately 10 areas along the Main Street. Such placement would allow parking places to be maintained for deliveries, moving services, some parking, required crosswalks, and disabled persons parking. I believe that we would have approximately 28 parking places that would remain of what's there now. This plan would require the use of public transportation to be affected in part to encourage shop and also we would we would be encouraging shop owners and their employees to park at remote locations further down the Main Street, or perhaps in some cases where, where engaged in, in discussions with the historic society to continue the village having opportunities to use that for alternative parking. And that would be done, in effect, to preserve the closer parking along Main Street in the affected area for patrons and customers who in the end are the ones that are actually spending money. Further information has been received from the state liquor authority that indicates that the authority is prepared to approve and outdoor extent expansion of licensed premises to include utilization of a budding municipal property or the proposed dispensing of alcoholic beverages. And I think I counted eight to 10 restaurants that would be affected by that. Although noting that all patrons must be seated to conform with COVID-19 distancing requirements before they can be served. So you can't be served an alcoholic beverage human's outdoor setting unless you are seated. There's no stand-up bars. Further, it recognizes, this is unusual, but it recognizes that the village will be maintaining the public sidewalks, or as they call them thoroughfares, for the benefit of pedestrians at all times and that no alcoholic beverage would be allowed outside of the designated seating areas for that respective property. There are some pros and some cons to this plan. I think we've all agree. Some of the pros are that it would replace for those businesses that are, that are being affected as they reopen some of their lost interior capacity as far as food and beverage services are concerned. It would provide an outdoor experience for patrons who are reluctant to be in an inside or interior area. It may attract additional pedestrians at the street to replace the loss of those that we will not see this summer from major events which have canceled. Thus improving the business opportunities for all of the businesses on Main Street, whether they're retail or restaurant. Implementation of this plan now would familiarize the community to some degree with the traffic flows and diversions that will be required on the Main Street reconstruction project actually starts. They are very, very similar. Traffic diversion plan has already been developed for the Main Street reconstruction plan, which hopefully we can roll out in some manner when we can have other, other than a gathering because we do not have the ability to have an open public meeting on that at the moment. So to some degree that, that plan required, required very minimal alteration by Creighton Manning to make it fit for the current outdoor Main Street project. And then finally, the New York state agencies that are involved here are the Department of Transportation and the state liquor authority, each of whom have, had published and indicated they will support this application should they receive an application from the village to do so. They are looking at numerous other communities in New York state who are looking to do this, a similar plan. And in fact, I do know that at least one county in New York is looking to see what Lake Classic's plan may be. The cons to this, the contrariations are, there is a loss of related parking places, somewhat replaced by use of nearby parking lots and supported by public transportation. The loss of budgeted parking revenues already reduced due to the number of events that are canceled this summer and what we anticipate will be a lower meter revenue income over the summer. The additional costs, which I mentioned earlier, 25 to 30,000, now 30 to 35 are not budgeted. However, they could be sourced from Park and Reserve Fund and also from a, from an outside source to the village, which has indicated substantial commitment that they would help underwrite this way. Additional traffic, another contrary, additional traffic experienced on side streets. Some residents in each of these streets have expressed their concerns and we have a, we have a file of those. And I think I might add, while, while we were focused on the side streets, if the plan were to go forward, bill credits would be isolated to local traffic, no commercial traffic. In fact, there's no commercial traffic permitted now. I have heard from some residents on this street that that isn't always applied by. It's not right. Merle Drive. Similar concerns there, complicated maybe more by the fact that the town and the village are in the process of replacing sidewalks back there, so there are times it's only the one lane road certainly without a flagman on the scene, but nevertheless, that's something to consider. West Valley Road, West Valley, I think we all know that on a normal, big, big summer day, getting off West Valley Road into Route 86 traffic in the balance can, can take some time. Ideally, there should be a traffic light there all the time, at least on a seasonal basis. And that is something that could be considered in respect to managing the traffic while they're a little bit better. This does require the support of public transportation and trolley systems that has not yet been restored by the county. An investigation of that service today, although they're preparing to reopen the service, the date, most likely a date in early July, has not yet been determined. Some concerns have been expressed about the noise in the hours of operation. We certainly would not want Lake Classic to become known as a party con, and that is not the intention of this effort in terms of what we're doing. The hours of operation would coincide with the noise ordinance of the village, which would cut it off at 9:30 in the evening, if it were in fact to be implemented. One of the other contrary issues is the time that's necessary to obtain the permits and implement this plan is very short, especially if it would start July 1st. Although the state agencies in the two primary cases have indicated they would, they would respond quickly, understanding what we're trying to do. Finally, one other contrary is that right now we're short of traffic control officers for this summer. Normally we have at least two on the payroll. At the moment, we have one. And we have an open position that we're interviewing for, but at the moment I cannot advise that we have that candidate identified. So that gives everybody, I think, a, what I hope is a fairly clear description of. So that gives everybody, I think, what I hope is a fairly clear description of the proposal, and I'm certainly gentleman happy to entertain your thoughts. Benny? If normally we go through this, perfectly happy. Jason?
Well, I guess maybe, I don't have... I guess I'm more interested, I've read several emails, and I understand the concerns, I guess. Are you, Mary, are you going to provide opportunities for individuals who are witnessing the meeting to speak their thoughts on it, or first, or at all, or, because that's, I have a couple of comments, but I guess it's, the more, the concern is more of just the people that have arrived, and maybe have an opportunity to share their thoughts.
Right. I'm asking first-
I always have two cents to share, but-
Thank you. I'm asking first for the trustees, if they have any comments they wish to make, and-
Okay.
Then, although unusual-
I will say that I've been in favor of the project, and I do, the common thread is the increased traffic in the neighborhood, and it is in my neighborhood, and I guess I'm willing to, I guess, say endure maybe increased traffic if there is a concession of having more of a police presence to monitor the traffic coming through, make sure that they're not going fast enough, maybe even looking into lowering the speed limits on village roads. I think that would alleviate some concerns. The reason why I would sacrifice sort of the influx of traffic is I, as I get more into understanding the sort of the global finance and the impact of this pandemic, and with the Fed Chairman saying that there's no, this V-shaped recovery is not going to happen, and that the second quarter, we're going to see a significant contraction in GDP and just consumer spending, that I, for the first time, and I make jokes that like, oh, Main Street's never been my base, the residents have, I fear for businesses. And I want to be transparent, my wife doesn't own a business, owns a business, just beat it, however, she doesn't have any intentions in opening until maybe August, so this reimagining doesn't necessarily impact her, or, and plus, the finances for the family are primarily for me. If any sort of money would be generated, it would probably add a loss as to make up for the rent that they haven't paid, so I'm not benefiting from this. I'm actually sacrificing, because I do live in a neighborhood where there would be increased traffic, and I just recently bought my son a bike today, and I'll be putting it together, and I'm very aware of wanting, not wanting cars, kind of already that come down Elm Street as it is, to come down a little bit slower, but I fear what is going to be coming that we haven't even experienced yet. And I think from the economic news that I have read, anyone that feels that we're just going to bounce back Lake Placid, I'm not necessarily sure that's going to be the case. And anything that we can do to help those businesses, I think we should entertain it. Now, there are several flaws that I hope that the board and the community can rally around and to address. But to think that Lake Placid is just going to bounce back, and that the amount of it not bouncing back has such several domino effects that people haven't even put into a perspective about how it impacts the finances from an municipality, from a county, and just from an individual's whose livelihoods are the businesses on Main Street. I think, I'm not saying they haven't, they haven't thought about that, but this is an opportunity where maybe the community can come together. I can understand that there's reservations, but I just wanted to say the reasons why I feel, as a board member, support. I hear that, I read all the emails, I hear the feedback, but I felt like I needed to share that in particular, before we move forward. That's it.
Thank you, Jason, for your comments. Any other trustee wish to comment at this point? If not, I'm going to invite interested members to see, they're going to have to identify themselves, and hopefully we can figure out how to control the order here a little bit.
Well, first, let's see, there's only a handful of you on camera. If anyone on camera wants to speak, could you raise your hand, please?
Dylan, I saw your hand.
Okay, so Dylan-
Dylan Radigan.
Heidi as well, I'm not in a hurry. You want to, I'm happy, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you very well, thank you.
All right. Yeah, I guess what I would, my thoughts are very simple. It's a great idea. I mean, and I second what Jason is saying, I think that we all know that Lake Placid is unique in the Adirondacks because of its, the quality of its commercial environment, the quality of its Main Street. We, I have myself a number of businesses that have been severely impacted by the slowdown. I think that it's a really good idea, so that's my first statement. I guess, I feel like what has to be more deeply considered is maybe some other small changes that might mitigate some of the traffic issues. I speak specifically from the perspective of being on Hillcrest. You know, if there was, if there was a budget, which obviously I'm sure there is not, you would want to have a sidewalk on Hillcrest. There's not a sidewalk on Hillcrest, you have a lot of children on Hillcrest, you have a lot of elderly people on Hillcrest, maybe there's a possibility for a temporary sidewalk, I don't know. There's a lot of speeding on Hillcrest, and there's very little enforcement right now before the overflow, so I really think there has to be a meaningful effort to either have a meaningfully reduced speed limit and meaningful patrol, and I know we can't have speed bumps because of the weather, you can't have speed bumps when you have snowplows and whatnot, but maybe some sort of temporary speed bump, like an industrial plastic bump, or a series of them, or even a traffic light. And then the last thought that I have, this would be constructive to the idea, but at the same time respectful of, again, my fantasy would be a sidewalk and a speed limit and a speed bump. The other thought, I wonder, is if you could make Hillcrest one way, the other way, so that you create basically a loop, so that you're not, now you're not, so you're just creating whatever the one way is on Main Street, that you're one way, the opposite direction on Hillcrest, which then creates the walking space and all that, and that doesn't also create a big budget issue, and that'll also create slower traffic. So that, that's my brief, hopefully constructive comments. I strongly recommend a traffic light, by the way, even if it's temporary for West Valley, it's not my, I'm more personally interested in Hillcrest because I live it, but I have a great appreciation for everybody that's going to have to deal with the traffic overflow. I strongly encourage doing this, but I don't encourage doing it without design, not just a design plan for Main Street, but a design plan for traffic management, speed limits, speed bumps, traffic lights, maybe shut down a lane on Hillcrest, to be constructive for the village's sake, so that's all.
Thank you, Dylan. Next speaker, please.
Heidi?
Heidi?
Oh.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for reading all our letters, and, you know, part of this is, as it probably came to everybody, it came really quick. We went from seeing a concept that Greg Borzilary presented, to reading in the paper last Thursday, a plan onto rerouting traffic to Hillcrest, even though I, it didn't come as a complete surprise, it was, there's very little time between putting that out there and you taking a vote on it. So, again, it's addressing residents, understanding residents' issues, as well as the economic issues. So I am interested, there are a couple of things. You said there would be, Hillcrest would be limited to local traffic only, which is not the way it is right now, it's just not commercial traffic. So I'm wondering about what kind of signage that would be, that would, that you would put, that would make that the case. The parking issue is serious. Where my house is, happens to be the narrowest section, there are stone walls across, right across the front of our property, stone walls which are actually crumbling, so that could be a problem if those were to fall this year. The parking there makes it so limited, the part with the parking, which is always maximized by, mainly, surprisingly, it's mainly Main Street employees that park in our neighborhood. So I don't see that changing in any other way, but the narrowness that that creates, side view mirrors right across from our house are regularly clipped off, on a regular basis, probably two or three times in a summer, in the winter, I mean, on a regular basis, the side view mirrors are clipped, so it's a constant narrow problem. When a larger vehicle, and everybody drives larger vehicles, you know, just construction trucks, I'm not even talking about tractor trailers, which do come by, people, pedestrians need to climb up onto lawns to get out of the way of that oncoming traffic, if you have a stroller, if you have a dog, very, that's just, that is common. So with the increase in the traffic, I really very much worry about the safety. A sidewalk would be great, we've always said that, but I don't really see that coming. The Hillcrest one-way is a very interesting idea, and I think I would support, I think I would support that, I think that would help a lot. Speed bumps, maybe, maybe not, the stop signs are fairly effective. We live in between the two stop signs, so we have the benefit of slower traffic in front of us, which is, being so narrow, that's an important thing, so that's great. The other, my other comment is, I would, I am very hesitant to accept the Roost survey of the residents. I did get that survey, and I did complete it, and voiced my opinion on that. My husband never saw it, and nobody else I talked to ever saw it, and so in terms of the residents reaching a survey through Roost, I, one, I don't know how you would ever think that that would have be, would be of importance for a public, a public decision, and secondly, I, you know, I just wonder about the methods of it, of who it really reached, did it reach people that would be affected? I'm not sure that the language in that survey, I can't really remember, I don't think it had anything to do with the direction and diversion of traffic, because that came out later. So I would, I would ask you to kind of throw out the resident survey in your decision-making, because I'm not, I don't think that that would be a fair thing for you to consider. So those are my, that's it.
I, I didn't factor that in at all. I was, I went on purely, when I polled quite a few people, and the feedback that I've received, the only negative feedback from the residents, and it may have been like the article indicating that it's coming to a vote, so maybe there wasn't a sort of, there wasn't a sort of impetus to reach out to the local officials until recently, only today, only over the last couple of days did I start to receive like emails in opposition. I was very adamant about speaking to different cross-sections of people to see who would support and who didn't support it, so not that the emails that have come in recently that are not valued, I just wanted you to know that when I spoke earlier, it wasn't based on, oh, Roost said this, because I don't do that, just for my, I feel compelled to share that with you.
No, that's, that's fine. Yeah, I would say that probably the flurry of emails you got, because I talked to a bunch of people, all directly came because we read the newspaper article on Thursday, and then-
Communication thing.
It's just, it's a, it's a timing, you know, this is a very, this is a very short window.
I completely understand.
Mary Jane Lawrence, you have the floor?
Hi, this is MJ from Roost. Thank you for giving me a minute to speak. Heidi, you are absolutely right. The majority of our mailing list are businesses that, you know, it's mostly B-to-B, and although we do try and spread our wings and encourage people to sign up for our communications through Roost, we're the first to admit that, you know, that's a work in progress, so I, you know, I agree with you. I'm also a resident of, off of Hillcrest, I live on Greenwood Street, and I share your concerns as well. I mean, even in the summer, people from West Valley are zipping up Greenwood Street, and, you know, coming off Serenac Avenue from the Custard and Mustard, or whatever they call that now, Mountain West, so I share everybody's concerns, and my greatest concerns, and I think as an organization, which I'm not, you know, is that the long-term health of our community, and we see right now on Main Street, there's four empty Main, there's four empty stores, and we know that there's more that are leaving, and I don't, you know, as a member of this community, and as an employee of Roost, am I 100% sure that this is the best idea, and that this is going to solve all our problems for the summer? No, I'm not, but I do think that it's worth taking this risk, knowing that it may very well create much more walking traffic on Main Street, and a much more vibrant Main Street than we will see under the certain curtain, excuse me, current guidelines from the state. I also find peace in the fact that if we see it's not working, we have to accept the fact that we've, you know, made an investment that wasn't a good investment, whatever that number ends up being from the village, and wherever else we're going to be getting this additional money to offset the cost, and we'll move it, and we'll, you know, and it becomes two-way again. That gives me some peace, that we're not going to have to look back on September and say, well, that was a bad idea. You know, so I feel that because we can monitor this as it goes on throughout the summer, we can make adjustments, or we can kill it, and just go back to a two-way Main Street. I feel, I mean, obviously, that's not the goal, but I find peace in the fact that that is an option. And as far as the traffic and, and all of the speeding, and, you know, the local, the signage will help tremendously, the support from the local police officers to be in these, you know, in this hub, this neighborhood hub, slowing people down, I know that there can be temporary speed bumps put in from talking to Brad Hathaway, so, you know, there's risk, for sure. I also think the bigger risk is to do nothing, you know, because then what? If we look back and our Main Street is empty, it's just not going to support not only our Main Street merchants, but when there's no place for them to make a living, they leave, and when they leave, their children leave, and then that depletes our school system, and then that's less teachers that live here, and then, you know, the trickle-down effect is, is very concerning. Will we have a Hannafords and a Price Chopper, or will it just then be one? Will we have a rural hospital, or will we be going to Plattsburgh? And I know that gets very big, very fast, but that is the potential for what our future could hold here. And these are unprecedented times, and I think that we have to, you know, we have to take a risk in hopes that, you know, with all the work that we've done, and what we've seen in other communities, that it will help. And so that's, you know, for whatever it's worth, I just want to, first and foremost, say, Heidi, you're right, we did not speak to the community members on our survey, and, you know, are we trying to do better at that? Yes. And as a community member, do I share concerns of the people that live on Main Street? Yes. And as a position in Roost, are we concerned about what the future of our industry holds? Yes. So, in closing, I say, you know, maybe we have to step out into the unknown a little bit, and take a risk, knowing that we can recover at any time in the summer if we feel we need to.
Thank you, MJ.
You're welcome.
Next speaker?
Is there anyone who has a camera, but it's not turned on, that would like to speak? If so, then we'd appreciate if you turned your camera on.
This is Sarah Galvin, and I can't figure out how to turn the camera on, but I would like to speak.
Go ahead.
And so, I called our devlin this past Saturday, a little after 4 o'clock, after driving home from walking my dogs at John Brown's farm, and specifically drove through Main Street to just kind of see what the pulse of Main Street- Street to just kind of see what the pulse of Main Street was like, and it was busy. I counted three open parking spots in front of Moon Tree Design, I noticed all the loading zones were full, the parking lots were full, town was full. So, I just, I have, I have to ask if any other Village Board members were up on the street this weekend to see what the street looked like without an event going on, and did you notice the traffic that was on the street?
I did, I even walked my son through, and it would be, I would have to do it a couple of times to discern whether it's just owners of stores, employees of some stores, there was traffic, and there was even some concerns, because I did see groups without masks, and so on and so forth, so there are a host of issues.
Sure, so I get, I get that, I understand, and I know that parking's not being enforced, I understand short-term rentals, I'm just saying, from a weekend with nothing going on, there was a lot of traffic on the street. So my first question is, if Phase Four happens in two weeks, and restaurant capacity has gone back up, store capacity has gone back up, not to 100%, I don't think we'll get to 100%, but if it goes up again in Phase Four, is this plan still moving forward?
Restaurant capacity won't go up, you have to be, the six-foot thing is not going away, above that.
What seems to be one of the underlying standards of Phases Two for outdoor dining, Phases Three for restaurants, and everything we're getting, and we're getting a ton of information every day, the governor's updating his program for New York State, we're trying very hard to stay on top of it, but Peter's correct, the spacing of tables, and the social distancing requirements seem to be the underlying threads that are appearing in every single industry that they're reopening, without exception. Will that go away anytime soon? I don't think any of us can answer that question.
We have that same maybe.
Yeah.
Okay, my other question is, what are the metrics that will be used to see how this is working?
That's a good question.
I don't think we've actually developed the metrics that far yet, Sarah, that I can, that the village has command of that, I think that's something that, a large part of it, I believe, is going to be judgment by what we see, and if we see impossible situations developing that we would wish to avoid, I think that will, that will have a large, a large role to play in how we look at this going forward. Recognizing that in the, in the initial sense, if this were to go forward, we've got a fairly substantial investment that the village is making, and what we would have to believe would be for the better economic future of our Main Street, given the present circumstances. That's about the best way I can answer that at the moment.
All right, and then my third question is, do we think that three loading zones are sufficient for Main Street for the summer with deliveries?
Peter? I'm not up to speed on that.
I don't where three came from.
I don't.
I'm sorry, I'm, I was referring to the map that was sent out from the Lake Placid Business Association meeting, and it only showed three red loading zones on there, with the green overlay of where the spots were going to be.
I don't know if you have a camera, Sarah, but this is the, this is the Creighton Manning version of how the Main Street would be apportioned in terms of locations of, of outdoor facilities, and you can see, you can see that, I don't know if you can see the gray areas, but there are red sections, there's at least one, two, three, up in the neighborhood of the, one big one by Steak and Seafood, Alice Theater, there's another smaller one, there's another one in front of Rupes Run, there's one still in front of Swish Shop, I'm sorry, I'm getting old, I guess, Circo Go Oil, there's one over here in front of, well, so we'll pull up right in front of the Bass Complex, there's another one here in front of, this is a terrible for this, at the bottom, right in front of, right next to the books, the bookstore, and the Northland School Building, there's another red one showing up down here.
So I guess that's a different plan, is that possible to share that information? And where do I find that information? Because that's not the, the plan that was shared through the Lake Placid Business Association.
This, this is, this is the work of our traffic planning people, this is Creighton Manning. Anita, I can give you, I can give you access to a file, and I think that's a senate that you can put out on the, on our site.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Sarah. Next speaker.
I will unmute everyone, and hope this doesn't cause chaos, and is there anyone who would like to speak right now?
Ania, this is Lori Fitzgerald, so the map that we put out from the Business Association was just, we used the Main Street Reconstruction Map as our basis, and we're just trying to give people some visual sense of what it was going to look like. So it was pretty tiny, I'm looking at it on my Chromebook, so I wasn't able to fully proof it, which I acknowledged when I sent it out, but there are lots, there are loading zones, and then there are large spaces where there'll be openings, like in front of Mids Park, where it won't be parking during the day, it could be used as a loading zone.
We can, we can, we can offer this, Lori, to the general public, it's, it's, it is the most recent version of, of the traffic planning.
Great, and it's the most official, ours, ours was just trying to, we were getting requests for visuals, and so we threw together a visual quickly, so I think your plan is the official plan, and that's the one that people should use.
Thanks, Lori.
Thank you, Lori.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
I would.
Please go ahead, state your name first, please.
Mary Nash.
Thank you.
You said, local traffic going up over Hillcrest only, who's going to control that?
I would say the answer there will be, as much as is feasible possible, it will be up to our local police department to, they're the only ones that can actually pull someone over, at least locally, and issue a ticket or something. And I know, Mary, that there is commercial traffic using Hillcrest despite the fact that there's a sign posted at the Catholic school, it clearly says no commercial traffic, so that is part of the endeavor that we have to undertake, and some of you might get, on Hillcrest may get tired of seeing the police car up there, but that's what it takes to control those situations.
I will be the first, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary, go ahead, I apologize.
One-way on Hillcrest, wouldn't that encourage the traffic up over Main Street, or over Hillcrest from Main Street?
That's a concept that has come up this evening for the first time, it's an interesting concept, something that our traffic planners should look at, and determine how, how that might be factored into the traffic plan that this were to be adopted.
Well, it seems to me that would make the loop even worse than it will be, because I would encourage the traffic to come up over and then down Main Street, or the other way around.
Mary, one thing for sure has to happen, and that is the cars that are parking on the shoulder of Hillcrest, which are actually sticking out into the westbound traffic lane, or northbound, I guess, will not be able to park in those areas, and that's been a frustration. I drive Hillcrest once a day, and I'm very aware of the fact that it's, Hillcrest has become like parkside drive, it's, it's.
Mary, don't we have a plan in place to address that parking that Heidi specifically mentioned, and you're referencing, whether it's fog lines, or just eliminating the parking there?
Well, it wasn't the parking quite so much as the traffic, if you have it going one-way on Hillcrest, and the opposite way on Main Street, it's just going to create that loop that's, rather than having some go around the lake, and some goes, you know.
I completely understand, and I think that was, that was an idea that was presented, but that would be in conjunction with potential rumble, speed bumps, portable speed bumps, and an increased enforcement, so, yeah, a combination of those, it doesn't seem feasible, for sure.
Right. The tables, would they be on the sidewalk or in the road?
They would only be in the park, in what is not parking lane and travel lane, they will not be, nothing is permitted on sidewalks. We insist by local, local law, government, society, the sidewalks will remain unencumbered and free, it's a six-foot minimum that we maintain for, it meets American with Disabilities Act requirements, and there will be no service on the sidewalks themselves, state liquor authority clearly recognizes that.
All right, so that actually makes my problem worse. If you put boulders at the end of the street to stop the traffic, and we all know we had a bad fire here not long ago, we have a fire, and Main Street is a parking lot, these fire trucks can't get up, we're going to lose the whole Main Street to a fire, rather than the lack of business.
The, the northbound lane of Main Street will be the through lane, continue.
Right, but there's going to, if it's a busy, you know, weekend, or any day in the summertime that's busy, it's going to be back-to-back traffic, and how are the fire trucks going to get through that? They can't move the tables that are on the sidewalk, and they can't move the boulders, or on the street.
There are no tables on the sidewalk, I just need that.
On the street, I misspoke, on the street.
Secondly.
You've got a fire truck that can't come to a fire on Main Street. They certainly can't plow the, they can't plow the tables out of the way, and if it's a busy weekend, those cars can't go anywhere, they're stuck, there might be a fire truck behind them with the sirens going, but they can't go anywhere.
If you're finished, I'll comment.
Yep, I'm finished, thank you.
Northbound lane will actually be wider than any one of the lanes that's on the street, that's the first thing. The second thing is, all the traffic is flowing in the same direction. The third thing is that we have effective fire police units that can change the direction of traffic, shouldn't become necessary, they can do that anytime. They have to, Main Street Fire Department has a well-documented plan for dealing with traffic and a fire, we did that 2016, I believe, when we had a bad fire one evening. Fire Department is fully aware of the planning, they're part of the planning, obviously, because we do respect the fact, but our fire trucks always come in from the south and go up the street north. Does that help?
No, I really don't like the boulders cutting it up. You're going to do what you're going to do anyway, you didn't put it up to a village vote, you hadn't sent it out to, you haven't sent it out to the residents, so you guys have already made up your minds.
Not necessarily, I just, and I, I always feel like, in my opinion, I feel like there may have been too much internal deliberation, and to some extent, and not enough external conversation.
What was that?
There was, I think the Village Board, and I'm not speaking for the rest of the Village Board, this is just my perspective, there was a reliance on several individuals to take the temperature of the community, whether that happened in the, in the most efficient and effective way, I guess that could be debated. I don't want there to be a misperception that we're just forcing this on you, there was a lot of deliberation last month within the Village Board, over a lot of these details. Now, a lot of, a couple of the members here, the audience have brought up some fantastic ideas, but this particular situation, I can't speak to any others, there was a lot of internal discussion, and skepticism, and conversation, and then maybe there seems to be a legitimate sort of gripe to say there wasn't enough external conversation with the residents, and I can agree to that, I just don't want the impression, or at least I, I would like to like address any sort of perspective that we're trying to ram this down the residents' vote, because I've never done that in 11 years that I've been on the Village Board, ever.
How do you figure you're not doing that, when you didn't, I mean, a mailing would have been nice, I've lived here 60 years, I didn't get any notification on this until I heard rumors around town.
No, no, and that's where I'm saying, there was a, there was external parties that were taking the temperature, could have been a little bit more efficient and effective, yes. There was a reliance on that, that, I'm not, so, there may have been some loopholes leading up, but there wasn't a unified, and you, maybe even if it comes to a vote, that it's not unified, there wasn't a unified sort of approach from the Village Board saying, we're doing this in spite of whatever feedback that we get, and the fact.
No, well, that was Roost, I believe.
I defend the mayor in this, and that, he was very, very cautious, and maybe overexamined every aspect in order to make sure that everyone that was on Main Street was accommodated, we could have gotten more public.
Main Street, the, the, Lake Placid is not just Main Street.
Oh, I know, oh, I know, if anyone knows who voted for me, they know that I, I view Lake Placid, the Village of Lake Placid is much more than Main Street, we're just happy to talk about it.
It certainly doesn't seem like that right now.
That makes sense, and I appreciate your opinion, I really do.
Do we have any other speaker?
Hey, guys, this is Dan Keller, can you guys hear me?
What was the last name, Dan?
Keller. Keller.
Okay, yes, please go ahead.
Yes, so I'm a Main Street resident, 2491 Main Street, eight and a half years of wonderful living here, I just have a couple thoughts on how maybe to make this a little easier on Main Street residents, you know, one of the things that's a major burden for residents of Main Street is the overnight parking and rotation, so, once a week, you can park at a certain spot, with the new traffic patterns, you know, if you're parked in NBT lot for Monday night, you have to move your car, you have to pull out, go left down Main Street, go back around Hillcrest, some other road, find a parking spot somewhere else so you don't, you don't do, so you don't get a ticket. I think if we can do a temporary suspension of that, we might, we might alleviate some burden on.
That's a great idea, Dan.
Another thought is, I think we have to look at the striping on the upper lot of the, in the upper NBT lot, there's not currently striping on the right-hand side of the new repurchased area, and then on the left lane of that, there's only parking that's one-deep, and even in the last time, I've seen parking two deep there, so maybe, maybe we could explore restriping that area, just get a, get a couple more spaces in there. And then lastly, you know, I, I just thought of this with Dylan's comments about doing one-way on Hillcrest, from an urban planning perspective, we know that on-street parking can slow traffic down, so if we go one-way, we're going to have a lot of room to, to maybe cone off a sidewalk, and maybe even add on-street parking there for eight weeks, and I think that would accomplish, you know, replacing some of those lost parking spaces, slowing traffic down, and hopefully making Hillcrest a little more safer. And so with that, I appreciate any, any thoughts of those ideas, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Would anyone else care to speak, please?
Can I just make my quick comment?
Yes.
Whether it's the fire issue, or whether it's the no sidewalk issue, addressing the speeding and all these other issues, I would just be curious, when you have the children, and you have the old people, and you're going to have the speeding and all, I mean, and again, I'm hopeful there'll be, hopefully there'll be speed bumps, hopefully there'll be some enforcement, at the very least, the one-way issue, again, I could see where obviously creates an encouragement for flow, but also properly managed, perhaps, reduce the speed of that flow in a loop. My point is, I would, I don't know whether the Village has a meaningful liability insurance program, or policy, I should say, but whether it's the fire issue, or the probability that a child, or a dog, or a person gets hit by a car on a street with no sidewalk, it's obviously going to be a much higher risk, as a.
Oh, so now we're planning about getting hit by cars, geez.
or the probability that a child or a dog or a person gets hit by a car on the street with no sidewalk, uh, it's obviously gonna be a much higher risk, um, as a.
Oh, so now we're planning about getting hit by cars.
Alright. Anyway, I hope there's an insurance policy that goes with this, that's all.
Kate Thompson, do you have, uh, you have a floor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, village board, and thanks to all on the phone. Lots of good, um, discussion tonight. Regardless of where we may end up with a final decision, I do think it would be extremely important to have a very prescriptive communications plan put together. One that acknowledges all the important constituents and stakeholders in this, uh, not just the businesses on Main Street, but includes all the residents and all the visitors. Um, and part of that plan, it would be smart to think through how we can effectively communicate with each of those subgroups, but also invite feedback and dialogue like tonight. Lots of great constructive, um, input tonight. I mean, if this goes forward, I'm sure everybody's gonna learn. Um, and it would be smart to have a way for folks to share observations and continue the constructive dialogue and the input going forward, regardless of where those people may come from. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. As, as you perhaps know or don't know, we have your, we have a report that you participated in the development of that addresses those very topics that you're just outlining. And I, you're absolutely right, uh, government, I think, especially now with the COVID-19 issues that we dealt with the last three months, is finding, uh, is trying to find effective ways to communicate with all of our constituents to go beyond, uh, even what we're using here tonight. But, uh, because not everybody tonight, I'm sure, is aware of the fact that they can pick up, they can, they can tie into this meeting and listen to as much of it as they're interested in doing. But thank you for your comments. Anyone else? So, uh, at this point, and, and again, the, the issue for, for this evening is, given the timing and the uncertainties of certain aspects of this that have to be in place, specifically public transportation, one that we do not have a date on. So to be able to, uh, for this board, should it choose, to act on this event, there are some things that you will be acting on with, and all of the information we would like to have. And oftentimes, that happens. But, uh, public transportation, uh, would be important if we're going to rely on parking areas that are remote from the affected area of Main Street to move people conveniently, uh, from remote areas. I think the best we know in discussions with the county as late as today that, uh, there is a plan to reopen public transportation by the county, which operates the Placid Express. However, the date, most likely in early July, has not yet been, uh, established. And therefore, uh, it makes the implementation of this particular type of program, should the board wish to go forward with it. I, I, I think the implementation date becomes, is in play. And whether it's July 1st, or July 7th, or July 10th, I don't know. Um, we also don't know, even though I have the assurances of the state agencies that they will move, uh, expeditiously, um, there's applications that have to be submitted to the State Department of Transportation. It's a big organization and they're operating, much like many of us are, many of them are operating from their kitchen tables in their homes still. And we have the same issue with the state liquor authority. So there's no guarantees, uh, that this could happen and be in place for July 1st. Possibility, but it's perhaps, uh, only fair to indicate that it's not certain. Other comments?
Well, I've been a proponent of this project this entire, one of the drivers of it, if you will, because of the economic, uh, there's no groups this summer whatsoever. It's probably 40% of our business, uh, social distancing for restaurants. We need, as MJ said, we need to help these businesses survive. But I think we have enough time to get this all, now, all the details that need to be worked on in, in two weeks, um, how to make this Main Street safe using boulders or barricades, which we don't have, move boulders, but we don't possess anything yet. We have a plan, but it's not a final plan. As Craig said, the OT isn't there yet. I just think if we had an extra month, we can make this happen properly and, um, maybe alleviate some people in Hillcrest's area concerns. One way, I'm really intrigued about one, the one-way, assuming that for the Main Street rehabilitation project, which we must do beginning in the fall, um, the same plan, as Craig said, is going to be implemented using Hillcrest and West Valley going south. Perhaps we should look into one-way in Hillcrest at that time. Certainly is, and put a sidebar, paint a sidebar, at that period of time. That's about a two-year project. Um, it has to get done. And, uh, we're just gonna have to grin and bear it. I live off of Hillcrest, as, as does Jason, and, uh, that's my larger concern. I thought part of this would get the residents, if you will, used to, the traffic pattern. Um, but I, I just don't think we're ready yet this time to, to move forward with the, this Main Street imagined. So I'm gonna vote no.
So, um, any other trustees wish to comment at this point? Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion.
I would agree with Peter.
Well, the question is really 25 or 30. Um, if we have to put in traffic lights, there's 7,500 a month, we're gonna need two. So there's 30,000 and it's somewhere between 20 and 35,000 is what I heard you say, Craig.
Not to mention you're gonna need additional signage on Hillcrest.
Right. Like, signage is part of the downwind, uh, and, and again, we haven't put in the local request. Downwind does what's required for the state highway conversions.
So I guess where I'm getting at there is we're, we're splitting the difference. We're up to 60,000, then 5,000 for Creighton, Manning. We're up to 65,000. We're really pushing 70,000, also taking into effect that it's gonna be one full week for DPW to put, put things in place on Main Street.
And we need a term before that happens, before we can do a thing.
Yeah, and is it possibly Roos willing to split the cost on that with us? I mean, it is public benefit, they do have that tax, or it is advertising. But the village taxpayer has to pick up that will be, we don't know about the shuttle setup type.
Sorry, this is MJ from Roos. I feel like, you know, there's ways to work around the cost if there's a will. I think that there's a way to work out, you know, getting it done if there's a will. So I think that the village board just has to decide if they think that it's a benefit to the community and that it's over and all a good idea. If you think that it won't be a benefit to the community and it's not gonna help the Main Street merchants and our business district survive, then, then that would be a reason not to support it.
Well, this has to be in place July 1. I mean, it could be July 7th, it could be July 10th. It would be nice to hear from, I know that the executive board of the Business Association that might be nice to hear from the full board, have a chance for them all to weigh in, and then possibly have some kind of survey that includes the village residents.
Yeah, I, I guess initially, when the idea was presented to us as a village board, there was a, uh, a near-unanimous sentiment about it. As the idea has been developed, it seems to be kind of, um, the, the meter has been scaling back. And, and if we can't, uh, and if we can't implement the, um, if we can't guarantee, uh, persistent, uh, and consistent, uh, police presence, uh, the idea of making, uh, Hillcrest potentially one-way, putting in the rumble strips, like, we're just, we're not addressing the unintended consequences, um, so that you just add to the, sort of, the, the, the number of challenges of putting this into place, unfortunately.
Kate Thompson, you asked to speak.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. Uh, just a thought, um, is, is it possible with this kind of procedure to say, over the next two weeks, let's take some of these issues, dive into them a little bit deeper, and put together, uh, a more detailed plan and then reconsider it again in two weeks?
Yes, there's a possibility. We certainly could table this for any action this evening, providing this motion to do so and, uh, to give us more weight and still salvage by the summer season, if ever the case will happen to work out. I think the things that we've heard this evening, which are helpful, part of the discussion about, uh, Hillcrest, um, and, and I think this has been mentioned here, that is, I think, from the village's perspective, that would allow, instead of, uh, instead of the really quick, uh, response that we had to have from our traffic planners, uh, would allow a little bit more, uh, hands-on work with them to see what we can do with some of these other recommendations. Whether that would, uh, bring us to a point where this process can happen, um, is uncertain. But I also think if we, if we stretch this out too far, that the, uh, some of the businesses that are interested in this probably will, will, will have fallen to the wayside, which may happen anywhere.
Mayor and the village board, I think that, and I respect everybody's opinions and concerns, and I have, you know, I can understand them all. I just feel like trying to implement this in the middle of the summer will be worse than, you know, than trying to do it, you know, finish it up as quickly as we can. And my understanding, and I'm not sure if Brad Hathaway is here, but my understanding is the pieces are in place, there are some questions out there, but he's ready to implement this from the detouring and the boulders and, and I don't wanna speak for him, but, you know, I think that we have a habit as a community of trying to get all the answers and have it in a nice package in order to make a decision. And I, and from my opinion, as a, as a community member, and I'm not speaking for Roos at this point, I think that sometimes we just have to, we have to face the facts of what we're looking at right now. And what we're looking at is a tourism industry that is very, very shaky at its best. And if we don't try to do something for this summer, we are going to, the potential of looking at a Main Street that's devastated, um, it could be a real reality for us. And then how to bring that back could take years. And maybe, maybe it's not. Maybe everything will go along as, as, you know, normal, but we know there's no events and we know that the capacity in stores and in restaurants is gonna be severely reduced. And we know that, you know, the travel industry, and we look at all the data every day, is not what it, it used to be. So, I mean, I just feel like coming back to this again and again is not gonna be productive. And I know it's a hard decision and I respect that, and I wouldn't wanna be in your seat to make it. But I think that it's at the point that either we do it and embrace it and figure it out, or we say, "We're not willing to make this, this leap." And then we, and then move forward and do the best we can with what we have and, 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 you know, hopefully have a successful summer, or some version of a successful summer.
It appears to me, MJ, that it just, um, the, the, the support, the enthusiasm has seemed to have waned to the point where there doesn't seem to be enough push. And, and I think, in fairness, there, uh, there were gaps in the communication with the greater public. I, we might be just in a situation where we just have to pray that we're wrong. We have to pray that people will come back. People will, it'll be just a slower summer. I, every economic indicator or forecaster that I've read has indicated otherwise. It's unfortunate, but, um.
I mean, the one counter, Jason, is that, uh, with all the international borders closed and the desire to be in cities at an all-time low, you look at Airbnb, their traffic numbers were the highest they've ever been year over year, and all the travel was within 200 or 300 miles. So there, Lake Placid on another level is actually very well-positioned, uh, relative to further, trips further afield. I, I'm not suggesting that, obviously, the allowance of Ironman, the horse show, I'm not, I, I recognize what's going on, but there is a countervailing force that is, and, and I'm not, this is not even so much relevant to the policy decision that's under debate, but just to the degree to which anybody's internalizing a particularly catastrophic view, there is a counter-narrative where Lake Placid is actually in a better position economically than a lot of places because of its regi, uh, being a regional destination, uh, which we're.
And I don't necessarily disagree with that, I'm sorry, but I think one of the things that we need to look at is that the volume going into restaurants and retail stores for the summer is going to be reduced. It's mandated that it's going to be reduced. There's no signs of going back to 100% occupancy in the near future in any of those venues. And so they might, you know, make it through the summer, but for a lot of those small businesses on Main Street and in the village, that has to carry them through almost. You know, yes, they get a burst in Thanksgiving and another burst Christmas week and a little bit in February, but then that's it until next summer. And so for a lot of these businesses, it makes up close to 70% of their budget. And, you know, although the Airbnb and the private rentals and the hikes and the, you know, Price Chopper and Hannaford might do well, I, the concern is that just the reduced occupancy in those businesses will be fatal. And so by, by having this, the seating on Main Street and the ability to have some retail on Main Street, you know, expands their square footage.
Yeah. I mean, listen, I, I, I think obviously having more of a mall-like environment on Main Street is sensation, is a sensational idea. There's no question about, on its merits, it's fabulous. It's can you accommodate, can you come up with something that is equally respectful to the residents, particularly on Hillcrest, particularly on West Valley? We've talked about these ideas. Maybe the one-way loop is a beautiful thing, because it creates more, you know, I, I don't, maybe there, you know, maybe the bumps, maybe the, I, there, my point, I guess the, the, I think the reason you run into some friction with this is because you haven't had the time to make meaningful consideration for how to accommodate the residential impact of this. I don't think anybody's against the main, I mean, I understand, I won't speak for other people, but I can see the merits of the, of the, of the idea on its service. I also understand the budget issue, where it's like, okay, well, we wanna accommodate everything, but how, how much are we willing to spend, you know, speed bumps are typically cheaper than.
Dylan, I would agree 100%.
And that's why I suggest, I'm sorry, Jason, that's why I suggested maybe just take a quick pause to put together more of the details, to have a deeper consideration, so the plan can flush out just a little bit more, uh, so that, um, the costs are better known, the work that has to be done is better known, and the details that need to be communicated to the different constituents and stakeholders who would be impacted would also be better known as well. I, I hear what you're saying, MJ. I personally don't think 10 days is gonna make that much of a difference at this point.
But, uh, I, I think the momentum is the, unfortunately, Dylan had a half dozen, uh, of great ideas that if somehow we, when we spoke about this idea and incorporated them, I think our trajectory would be significantly different. Unfortunately, uh, we didn't have that, and it seems like our trajectory is, uh, we as a board, if, with this idea, now, mind you, it wasn't the board's idea. There was an idea that we, uh, that was brought to us because we wanted to help out. Incorporating these ideas and then representing them, would it create a, a more inclusive conversation and then reignite some momentum, potentially? My experience would say that it's, uh, unlikely. So I think that's where MJ may, I don't wanna speak for MJ, that's where, if there isn't a, a commitment in, in, in theory now, for a collective group to move this whole project forward, there's no sense in doing it at all.
I agree. I agree with you. And I agree that, you know, the, you know, hindsight being 20, and 20, and should we and could we? And do we wish we had? Yes. And I guess the question we might, you know, I think goes back on the community members at this point. You're right, we are all going to have to sacrifice this summer if, if we decide to move forward with this. And is that sacrifice? And is that sacrifice worth it? You know, if you live on Hillcrest or in one of the neighborhoods and, you know, the traffic, et cetera. So, you know, I guess that's the question that I, I bring back to the community. Is, is this, is the sacrifice, because it's not going to be equally weighed at this point, you know? And that's the reality of the situation. We're not going to be able to accommodate everybody. We're all going to have to, you know, bear a little bit of the brunt in hopes that, you know, it'll have a, a very positive benefit on our main, you know, corridor in our village.
And I guess. I mean, it's speeding cars are the, I mean, as long as fast cars, whether it's on West Val-, you know, whatever the solution is, forget my suggestions. I mean, the number one problem is speeding cars on Hillcrest, speeding cars on West Valley. What, if you can start, whatever the most cost-effective way and most actual real way to stop the cars or slow the cars, I think is their, your major challenge.
Yeah, I, uh, fantastic. And I also, and to, and to speak, uh, to Dan's, I have brought up, uh, residents as far as to ensure that, um, at the very minimum that these, uh, the parking permits, the off at spots oftentimes get taken up at a very busy times, that they're, that they're insured, if they have a parking permit, that they can stay there. And it alleviates the, uh, the concern of having to hopscotch different parking lots, um, for overnight parking. And, um, there, there are several facets. And I guess just speaking to MJ's point, a bigger point is that there, in retrospect, in order to ask people to sacrifice, you've got to have a conversation with them prior so they can make the choice, instead of forcing the sacrifice on them. And then, I think that's where we fell short, unfortunately. Maybe we can revisit that.
100% agree. I agree.
So, uh, and I, Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we just table it and factor in, uh, Dan's, uh, Heidi's and Dylan's, uh, suggestions, um, and, and engage in a conversation. If it doesn't reignite some sort of momentum for this project, no harm, no foul, I guess, at this stage. And we'll, um, but that doesn't mean our job is done. This, we have not seen the significant, the economic impact of what has transpired yet. We will see it this next quarter and the next two, more than anything. And knowing that terrifies me, even though I'm like, I'm supporting a family, uh, on one salary. Uh, there are going to be many more businesses who are, are, that are going to go under, that our people are going to leave because they just won't have the work here. And that, there was a study by the Fed that nine out of 10 people who lost their job expect to go back to work, with only six out of 10 actually will. And we are already lacking workers here and, and people as, as a whole. I can't, I, I just, I, it's going to be very interesting, interesting times over the next couple of years.
Well, we have, Jason, we have your motion on the table. Is there, uh, is there a second for the motion to table this? To provide, uh, would have to be very brief additional time to factor in some additional considerations that, uh, certainly appear to be worthy on the surface of maybe taking that time.
I guess I'm the only one, huh?
You want a second?
I made the motion that we abolish the Main Street.
Okay, we have to get Jason's, uh, there, there's no second for Jason's motion.
Okay.
So we'll move on to the motion that Scott, Trustee Manwell just made, which would be to not give word with the proposal.
Second.
Peter seconds. Further discussion? Any other comments? If not, uh, we'll call a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Which we owe?
I, I vote in favor. Uh, if there's no, uh, support for at least a, a subsequent conversation, then we should just put, put it to bed and, um, see where we go from there.
We don't have time to do it right.
Okay. In that case, um, I think this activity this evening, though, nevertheless provided some valuable input and information because this matter of diverting traffic, depending on what's going on in the village, is going to come back. Um, should be, should be a Main Street reconstruction project, which is a, uh, a much larger and, and absolutely necessary project that's going to have to take place very soon. So with that matter, we'll close the discussion on that topic. And we'll move on to the agenda.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, Janet?
Um, I have another, uh, web meeting at seven o'clock and I was hoping that we would be able to sneak in um, a short executive session regarding litigation. Um, I, I don't want to, uh, upset the agenda, but I just wanted to let you know, uh, I'm going to have to jump off here at seven. Maybe I can come back on if you're still here.
Okay. You, or are you asking that we go into executive session now and then come back at all?
Well, if that, if that is the board's, uh, desire, but we do have a pending case that I'd like to speak to you about.
The, uh, uh, Anita warns me that we have to cut off our audience at this point, so.
Well, if, if we were.
If, if, if we were to go into session now.
And we need ourselves to just turn the camera off? We could, but would people really want to hang out?
Yeah.
Just to come back?
Mayor, is there a work session tomorrow?
No.
No, it's, uh, away from, away from tomorrow.
I don't think, I, I don't, I think there's some decisions that have to be made before then.
Okay, do we, uh, we, we, we've still got some fairly significant discussions ahead on a couple of other items. Will I give you time enough to do your other?
Uh, I hope so. Um, I would expect it, I, uh, and, and maybe we could always do a, a special meeting to go into executive session by, uh, by web or something.
We can do that. I think we have to.
So I'm, I'm gonna be, I'll be with you till seven. We'll see how far we go. And then, um, what, what's the best way to approach a, a discussion that I would like to have regarding pending litigation?
Okay, I know that's, that's a significant issue, so, uh, let's proceed with the agenda and we'll try to, uh, see where we end up.
Thank you.
Um, the next item we have, um, and, and trustees have, have gotten certain documentation. In November 2018, um, the Lake Placid Essex County Quality Destination Organization, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Lake Placid Chamber of Commerce Incorporated, also known as Roost, borrowed, uh, $237,000 from the Village Lake Placid Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund. Um, that loan was granted to them in connection with their underwriting of the International Children's Festival, which was taking place in January 2019. The loan was secured by a market New York grant for $250,000 to assist in funding the costs of that event here in Lake Placid. However, as with many grants, you have to first produce the work and then, uh, submit, uh, and you get reimbursed. Um, the loan was extended to them, uh, without understanding and with the fact that it likely will not be repaid until, uh, May of this current year, 2020. The, uh, the grant funds have been received. The loan itself has been paid in full. Um, the, the letter that they had submitted May 1st, uh, indicated that they're, uh, like, like everybody, are, are dealing with the adverse impacts of COVID, uh, virus, uh, issues. And they were asking or indicating that it would be beneficial to their organization to, uh, if they could extend that loan for an additional year, uh, for which they would pay the venue interest and, uh, continue to pay interest on a monthly basis. Examination of the loan documents and, uh, it indicated to us that, uh, that was not a possibility, uh, in large part because the recipient of, of the consideration is, is the, uh, is Roost or the Lake Placid Chamber of Commerce Incorporated. Therefore, that requires at the very least a, a new loan, uh, agreement and note, uh, an obligation to create that obligation. Uh, I have provided to the trustees a memorandum, uh, almost feel like I'm putting on a hat, but I've worked 45 years in another industry, um, indicating the particulars of the loan request and why the Chamber of Commerce is in this situation, but largely what has happened to them, uh, certainly no fault of their own, was the unexpected, uh, financial impact that occurred with the, uh, with the events that took place starting in March. As a result of that, uh, the, the, uh, board, the governing body developed a revised budget, which dramatically, uh, re- reduced its, uh, anticipated revenues and income for the, for the current budget year, which will end as December 2020. Um, and, and, and actually reduces by 50%. A large proportion of that, uh, represents, uh, debt tax that is not going to be generated this year. And therefore, uh, caused them to, uh, do what every other household budget has to do, which is rein everything in. Um, it, it affected their, uh, staffing patterns. Staff was placed on furlough, um, and, uh, expenses were cut as much as they could. Their revenue was cut by 50%. Their expenses based on the 2019 year were cut by roughly 25%. And where that leaves them is with, uh, is with a, a budgeted shortfall of, uh, about $600,000. 250,000 of that is being sought from another, uh, agency, which, which I, I believe will be acted on. I don't know if MJ is still on the line. Okay. Um, the other 50% or, or 250,000, they're, they're looking to, as I said, sort of extend the loan they already have. But we have to actually recreate it as a new obligation, given the difference in the borrowing entity. So what, in my review of this, which can consist of looking at their audited financial statements for 2017, 2018, uh, their audit 19, it's not done, but I have their, uh, becomes, uh, un-audited statements and they, they all reflect a very, uh, conservatively-run operation that stays within its revenues. Uh, they're not showing significant shortfalls, uh, in, in their years. In all respects financially, it's my opinion that, uh, Roost is, is well managed. I would credit that to their accounting people. And, uh, I think they've taken a responsible approach to the fact that the world turned upside down in March, as far as we're all concerned. But there's certain parts of their operation that need to be continued because in that is the very work that they do, that, and a large part of that, Lake Placid is a beneficiary of, uh, that would otherwise be curtailed, uh, even further than what their budgets suggest right now. So, uh, with that said, ladies and gentlemen, uh, I'm putting on my, my old lenders hat, I guess. Uh, I am recommending to the board that we approve them. And I would recommend, uh, for the sake of round numbers, along the 200, uh, well, 237,000 is what they're asking for. The interest rate, uh, was, was previously four and a half percent. If I have any issue with that, I think that's a very good investment for the village. And I think extending this, this loan can be extended. Um, I don't think there's anybody in the room that believes that our, uh, tourism industry is not going to come back, although the recovery period may be extended and it may be more than one year before we see the type of, uh, uh, revenues that they're accustomed to receiving from the debt tax. And I believe that this loan can be safely extended and safely repaid. What I would suggest, however, is that we make it one-year note with the caveat that, uh, in, in the event they need to, that very much like we do with a bond anticipation note, that they, uh, would have the privilege of extending it for one further year with, with, with a reduction of 20% of the loan balance.
Hey, you keep saying extended. I thought, I thought they gave it up.
They did.
Okay, so it's just.
So this is a new loan.
It's not being extended.
Well, extending in the manner.
We.
Believe me, if I could, if I could use the original loan documentation, it would be much easier.
Yeah, much easier, sure. But it's a different entity.
But it's a different entity and, uh, and therefore we, we have to match that up. Um, from, from the revolving loan, uh, aspect, this is a loan that, uh, can be made, providing, uh, we are allowing the credit, the, the borrower, in this case Roost, to either defer or create jobs. Uh, that's what that money was left here for. Traditionally, in the past, we've made it, we've made loans to various businesses, sometimes startups, sometimes existing, that have, uh, that have been put out there for usually five years. Um, they revolve back in and the monies are available to remit. Currently, we have no outstanding, uh, loans in that portfolio, so we're earning a grand sum of about 1/4 of 1%.
Um, security?
Security, uh, Janet and I have discussed that and, uh, I think in this case here, we don't have the, the type of security that was available for the children's loan. And that was a grant that was absolutely assigned to us when it was finally received. What this will most likely have contained in it is a security interest in general business assets, which could be, which is cash and receivables.
So, and the loan documentation, will be written that way?
We'll have a security interest in those. That, that's what I would recommend. Um, the other, the other part of this request is a similar loan from, in this case, the county. And, uh, I put in a call for the county manager and their attorney to, uh, discuss that, just so that there's no, uh, I don't want them thinking that we're making this credit without their knowledge. And frankly, I want to know what their conditions are. But with that knowledge, I think this loan can safely be made.
Because you were stuck to your guns the last time around, we would make whole. So I got to do.
So would you like a motion pending what?
Peter, to answer your question, we could also take an assignment of the, um, uh, bed tax receivables.
That's sort of what.
Which is what the mayor's talking about.
Okay, I'd like that.
I think we all have confidence in the future, even though at the moment things are down. But, uh, this situation is certainly no fault of Roost. And as I've said, my, uh, analysis of their, uh, balance sheets, their income statements, their ability to stay within their budgets, um, I think, and, and a very responsible accounting system, um, suggests to me that, uh, that this is a, this is as good a loan as we probably ever get to make in this, in this resource.
The challenge for all of us is going to be control across. Maybe, maybe this is going for less income, less expense.
So we have a motion, aren't we?
Did you want something in there depending on what the county does? You mentioned, you mentioned that.
No, I think that's something that Janet and I will have to be satisfied with, but I don't know. But, uh, I, I, I just want that information before we, uh, close it. Further discussion? If not, I'll call it, we'll call a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Very well, we can move forward with that. The next item we have, uh, and, and hopefully Kate Thompson stayed on the line, but, uh, the, uh, the Development Commission, the North LA Lake Placid Development Committee. the, uh, the Development Commission, the North LA Placid Development Committee, uh, undertook a project to, uh, study, and this, this was done jointly with Cornell University and Kate Long, who was an intern. Uh, and Kate Thompson, who was on with us and still is on with us, uh, actually put this study together. The, the, uh, the report was given to the, uh, town and the village boards, and I think tonight, all I'm asking for, um, is a, is a motion accepting the report, and I believe you all each have an executive summary of that before in your portfolio. So questions for the discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? And I would, I would just, just like to comment, uh, that the, the study is, uh, addresses the issue of, of communications and transparency. And, uh, perhaps, uh, encouraging the town and village to, uh, look forward to, uh, expanding its ability to communicate. And, and tonight was a perfect example. We had a way of, of communicating with all of our residents in, in, in total. Uh, the, the outcome of the discussions about the Main Street project itself would probably have a much more comprehensive, it's not probably, it would have much, much stronger foundations, as this board is delivering that activity. So with that said, uh, I believe the, uh, the, the plan of the town, who's already received this report, and the village is to accept it and to move forward with the recommendations that are, uh, contained within the report. I think information technology is, uh, is the way of the future. And I, I did comment, uh, while after they were giving the report, that eleven years ago, when some of us became, uh, trustees and mayor of this board, we did not have a webpage, we did not have a Facebook page, we did not use Twitter. Basically when people wanted to, uh, we did not have the technology we're using today, which came more recently. But thank goodness that we have this because it does give people the ability to, uh, listen in on and, and be able to comment on when it's appropriate. The deliberations of this board and likewise the town board, both using the same, uh, technology at this point. There are, there is more to the story and there's more that can be done. Um, we're, I, I, I think I've had brief discussions with the town board about the possibilities of coordinating a redesign of our webpages, websites, which are admittedly not easy to navigate. And maybe something better can be done that would be more appealing to our constituents. So Kate, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Um, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity. Just that I thought Kate Long did a fabulous job with, um, her research. She not only pointed to the technology aspects of communication, as you've just outlined, but she also talked to the approach and frameworks for how we communicate and how we get input back regardless of the technology. So I think both the town and the village have some really big opportunity, um, uh, to, uh, to modernize some of the platforms, but also equally is important, uh, to, um, refine the way communication is approached and the frameworks used to share information as well as gather information from the community. So thank you.
At, at this point, I would ask for a motion accepting the, uh, report as presented by Kate Long and the Development Commission and Kate Thompson. Okay, we're all set. Very well.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you very much, Kate. Um, moving ahead, the next two items, J and K, I think we can probably take together. Because I hope these are setting the next six months of, uh, board and work sessions. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, those are done. Next items, anything else from the section? Then we'll move to treasurer. Uh, the first item we have, uh, is affidavit number twenty-one, is the current budget year. Our names within the list of bills to be paid tonight. Totally six hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. And in addition, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eight cents of utility refund checks issued to various customers in the village. Hello? Peter, seconds. Uh, you've all received the detail on these, so questions of all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The next item we have, uh, the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one village budgets. Our mayor has submitted them to the clerk. And, uh, this evening, um, need to set a public hearing date, which I believe has to be at least ten, ten days, uh, meeting.
We need to give them this
Ten days notice from tomorrow.
Well.
Can we do it the next meeting? Public hearing?
No, that's July sixth.
We, we have to accept this budget no later than July first. So we're going to have, have a public hearing and, and that will be a special board meeting call for the purpose of acting on the budget as well. That does not mean that U S board trustees can't continue to work on possible changes, but we will not be changing this budget as it stands until after the public hearing. So that will all happen. The hearing has to happen first, then if there are changes, they can be, uh, they can be acted upon subsequently. Set notice, allow that.
I'd like to have a meeting, a budget meeting separately.
Okay, we have a Tuesday work session. Would you prefer Tuesday for budget hearing? For budget work? Okay. But in the meantime, we need to set this date. So, uh, we have a date?
Thank you.
June, today is June fifteen, June, uh, to give ten days from tomorrow would be June twenty-sixth. Is that like on a
It's a Friday.
Or the twenty-ninth is away, or
Yeah, I'm trying, that's the twenty-ninth. Possibly not going to be yet from six.
Okay. Then, um, with your pleasure, we will, uh, we will set the two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget, the public hearing for June twenty-ninth. I'm, uh, we want a five o'clock session. What's your pleasure? Get the clock PM.
Okay.
Okay, so. Move on now to old business, I think, of question, anyway. Nothing new. Well, Main Street reconstruction project, I, I, I'm, if I had not made a lot of progress at the last meeting, I indicated I would attempt to, uh, find a, a media person to put together a presentation for the public, since we cannot have, and it doesn't look like we're going to be able to have, a community, uh, public gathering. I'm going to try to do something that we can issue to the community via media. Uh, I'd like to have that, uh, in place before this project, uh, goes out. The, uh, the project itself is almost ready. I think we're waiting still on the New York State Department of Transportation. Who still is, uh, is considering all of it. I've seen communications, they're down to those myriad details that you get in a project this size, uh, that they want answers to. So that's where we're at right at the moment. Hopefully by Tuesday I'll have a little more information on how we might accomplish a public piece of this. Land use code update, art, need activities.
Six of the things the last three weeks were still filed through the definition. Probably low for
Moving on to mayor items, um, the only thing I have to add to the discussion is that we have received a, a notice from an individual, Lee Collins. Together with a Sierra Brewster and a Cassandra Poe, are, uh, have announced that they are, uh, conducting a Lake Placid Unites protest, uh, rally to be held Thursday, June eighteenth at five o'clock PM. Uh, they will congregate in the Olympic speed skating oval where they received the approval apparently of Florida and school district to do the rally and at the, uh, as a group, uh, their intention is to march through town and back. Um, I have been in some discussions with the chief more, the chief is aware of this. He indicates that no action is required on the part of this board. They're simply practicing their civil rights. And so long as they, they conduct their walk on the sidewalks, uh, there's nothing more needed than what we normally would be concerned with, like when we do the Out of Darkness Walk in October. Police department will undoubtedly make sure that they're present, uh, where this road crosses. But, uh, other than that, um, they are also asking, they are indicating that they will, uh, it's, 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 hopefully they will be friendly, peaceful. Making it clear that everyone's required to wear a mask and practice social distancing. So I would assume the walk means every six feet, that will be separate families that can be together. They are passing petition around at that event, uh, similar to what they did in Cernac Lake, announcing police brutality. Uh, she's indicated Cernac Lake has adopted this and they're already, uh, promising community meetings about it this week. But, um, she goes on to say, "We recognize the positive relationship that our police department has with our community, but we would like to adopt an ordinance that explicitly condemns police brutality. We want this to be a peaceful and effective community gathering. We would appreciate your cooperation attached to the flyer we've created for the event. We do encourage people to make their own signs." This is what we're seeing. I think, uh, since this, well, this message actually came to me Sunday afternoon at five o'clock. Previously, the, on Friday, the governor came out with some directives that are addressing, uh, police departments in New York State. And, uh, I, I think before we, uh, take an action to adopt an ordinance, that we need to understand the governor's directives and he gives departments until April two thousand twenty-one to, uh, develop, uh, whatever it is he's asking for. I don't have the benefit of those today, so I'm not in a position where I can describe them. But I believe that would be the appropriate, uh, response. And, uh, I, I don't think there's anybody in this room that probably doesn't agree that, uh, we do not condone, uh, actions of brutality, uh, in it, especially by our police department. And fortunately, it is not an issue. So any, any questions on that that I haven't addressed? And, uh, I, I think possibly on Tuesday, uh, I may ask Phil Moore to, uh, address the working session with more information.
I, I just have one question and maybe this could be, uh, Scott may be able to elaborate on the details. And I did see some emails, as far as the, I don't recall in my time as a, a trustee that a, uh, any of our police forces used any of the, sort of the techniques that were, um, exhibited in other places. Are they, is that, are they codified? Not, is there a certain, I know I've talked to other police precincts or police departments where they have a, a codified, uh, acceptable sort of, um, uh, physical responses. Do, do we have that at the, the Lake Placid Department?
I believe they do use them.
The chief has indicated
There's a whole daily force section.
Because there was a, a study saying that's the, the, not that we as a, uh, a, a police force have had that concern, but, uh, one of the major ways of reducing any sort of those is to have those sort of policies in place, like no chokeholds, so on and so forth.
The chief has indicated to me that, uh, similar policies to that. Uh, I did ask him for some discussion. I did not, and, and today just did not provide that opportunity, but, uh,
He did indicate they're being very proactive to, to ensure that, uh, those sort of, um, uh, we adhere to those, not that we've had any instances. And I was very, I was very excited that we're very proactive in that sort of response.
If there's any changes, you have to do it by April first.
So with that said, I, like I said, I think on our work sessions Tuesday, uh, I would ask Phil to, uh, appear and just simply respond to, uh, any, any questions that we may have and, and perhaps, uh, there'll be a, uh, there'll, there'll be some discussions to how we might, uh, formalize our, our, uh, what we see. I too agree with you, with the, the eleven years plus that I've been in this office, we have never dealt with, uh, anything that we've been made aware of, that even, that this is, is brutality. But we're, you know, we're, this is a different world that we're in right now. And, uh, it makes sense to review this stuff and to take the appropriate actions. Commissioner reports, any?
Electric conductors are all strong, that's, uh, sub one, repeat. Kimball's coming up with a day professional grid. Make it hot.
I know he called me the other day and asked me if I had some time to come down so he could show off his, uh, his model. Which, which frankly, I, I think anybody should drive by. To me, when I, when I drive by the firehouse and look over at that old little grid, it's, it's like a piece of science fiction. Really, really, um, quite, quite interesting.
I think they're pouring concrete tomorrow.
Uh, Monday, well, no, that's right. It was supposed to start today, but, uh, I think you're right.
That's right.
You know, I'm, 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 I'm impressed with the speed with which they're moving the whole project and they're doing really, you know, they're not only doing the old removal, they're, they're preparing the under structure for, uh, drainage systems. And at the same time, they're, I've never seen anybody put down curbs as fast as they will. It looks good. Uh, right now the sign looks a whole lot wider than it was. I don't know what it seems like when it's done. What is it, six feet here?
It's gonna be the same as it was.
But, um, you know, if, if, if they can move that fast, it seems like we can get all done by mid-July.
It's a long way, hard way to go.
But I, I realized too that that also includes a replacement of that wall by the old Lake Placid Club ho-house. And that's, that's going to take a little bit more than a couple of days, for sure. Is there anything else to come before the board tonight?
I have a commissioner report, I have a question. Theme of saving money, do we really have to have an election for our court of justice? That will only allow, what, seven months before, eight months before we need another election?
It's my understanding, it's an absolute requirement. Other people have asked me that too.
It just seems like
I, I think the governor's telling us to think outside the box, that there ought to be something, but especially there's only one person running. Yeah, it's just
Well, I understand the economics of that art, but anytime that you feel like we don't need an election, I'm like, that's such a dangerous precedent, even if it is a cost-saving measure. I, I, I completely agree with the economics of it, but even when New York State did that, as far as the, uh, Democratic primary, I thought that was you, that's just undermining the democratic process. That's my two cents.
More than one candidate, though.
I would also want to be quick to point out, our court manages the least expensive elections in our state.
Highly efficient.
Yeah, but anyway, Judge, uh, Judge Corson, uh, you know, like you just told me, you know, you're going to be the law, and this is going to be the longest term you've ever served without an election. This is going to be the longest term you've ever served without an election. Actually, I do wonder if, if the governor's gonna look at this and say, you know, why don't we just push them all off until whatever next language election is. I will tell you, the court, the courts, uh, haven't, they haven't set the reopening date yet. I guess that's still a limbo.
That was August first.
Um, yeah, I think it's from July twentieth to August first, but, uh, but the, uh, the backlog is going to pose, uh. We're, we're gonna have a significant, uh, traffic in here. I know they're planning to use this room because they have to stage these people for distancing purposes. So we'll see. Anything else? Is there anyone left in the audience that would like to address the board? Can you want to leave?
I think she has to.
I'm all set, guys. Thanks for asking.
Okay. Hopefully we gave you plenty of information for this week.
Yeah, I mean, I, the only thing I'd want to clarify is I heard the three votes yes for the, uh. Not moving forward with the Main Street reimagining thing, but I didn't hear the no votes.
Actually, it was four.
Four, okay.
Early votes in the event that there's a tie.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Jason, you did vote to, uh.
Oh, I voted in favor of not moving forward. It, I, the, if there, there wasn't a support to, um. At least have a discussion and, and then maybe see if there's, uh. If we incorporate more of the community components of it, if it reignited any like enthusiasm. But, um, there just, just doesn't seem to be a general sense that that's desired, so. I think we should just move on and focus on the projects and, and maybe assist Main Street however we can, uh, in smaller steps and increments. Moving forward, yeah.
We have more time. Totally agree.
In, in any event, the exercise and discussion, uh, was and is beneficial and will be, uh, will, will help to guide the village. With the bigger project coming up in the future months because it calls some. I think Peter, we, uh. Any reason that is valuable. Good, um. Anything else to come before the board tonight?
What do we decide to do about the executive session? Just have to wait for another time?
I think we're gonna have to wait for another time. I'll talk to you about it in the morning.
Review call, special meeting.
Sure, we'll tell.
Yeah. Any of you, I, I don't have multiple copies of this right here, but here is a, uh, here is a copy of what the Main Street project. All in favor of the. Any opposed? Treasurer.
You all.
Great night, guys.